Sir.
Have a nice rain, yeah. What a late show with it too. Oh yeah, she really lit up.
See we had. We had. We had, we had no. No, nowhere. And I was, I was up through the whole thing.
Fifty-nine.
Can you?
Okay, decent. I wasn't sure if I did.
Good morning, everyone. It is nine AM. I'm going to call this meeting to order of the Cottington County Board of Commissioners. It is Tuesday, August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Commissioner Waterman, would you lead us today?
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Just a reminder, if you have a cellphone, if you could silence it, if you need to take a call, if you could step out. And also, we are streaming live on YouTube. I don't believe we have anybody joining us by Zoom this morning. Correct, Commissioner Gable? All right, item number two, call for public comment. These are items that are not on the agenda and for information only. The num- two numbers that they can call are eight-eight-two-six-two-four-eight or eight-eight-two-six-two-nine-seven. Number three is conflict of interest items. Any for fellow commissioners?
None.
None.
Okay, item number four, action to approve the August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the August seventeenth, twenty, twenty-one minutes of the Cottington County Board of Commissioners. Motion by Johnson, second by Van Duzen. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, that motion carries. All right, item number six, first reading of ordinances, number seventy-five, number seventy-six, and number seventy-seven. This is a first reading only. There will be no public hearings, no comments, just strictly the readings regarding medical cannabis. And we have Luke Muller here to help us through that process. Good morning, Luke.
Good morning, and as you.
Turn on your mic. There we go, here I am. Good morning, as you said, I am here, I am basically just here to read, and that's it. Cindy, do you have ordinance seventy-seven? I apparently didn't. So, I'm not reading verbatim. For those of you who are not aware, I don't have to read seventeen pages of documents. I read the title of these ordinances. So we'll start with ordinance number seventy-five. Ordinance number seventy-five is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to amend Article Two definitions, Section three point oh five oh one, permitted uses in the C Commercial District, Section three point oh six, permitted uses in the II Industrial District, and Article Five supplemental regulations adopted by ordinance sixty-five as amended of the zoning ordinance of Cottington County. So that is the first reading of ordinance seventy-five, which would amend the zoning ordinance for the area outside of jurisdiction, joint jurisdiction, sorry. Ordinance seventy-six is the zoning ordinance amendment, which would amend the joint jurisdiction zoning ordinance, of which the city has a corresponding ordinance, number four. Ordinance seventy-six is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to amend Article Two definitions adopted by ordinance sixty-one as amended of the joint zoning ordinance for Kynan County and the City of Watertown. Those are those two zoning ordinance amendments in their readings. And then the last one for first reading is ordinance seventy-seven, an ordinance establishing licensing provisions for cannabis establishments to the revised ordinances of Cottington County. That is more of a general ordinance that does not involve zoning. That's it. For what it's worth, we have one more step in this, a couple more steps, but for your standpoint, the next step is for second reading and public hearing, which will be held jointly with the City of Watertown at their meeting at five-thirty PM at City Hall on Tuesday, September seventh. See if I passed that pop quiz. Yes, it is Tuesday, September seventh, is that date. And for anyone there that is going, that isn't the commissioners too, there'll be three ordinances the city will be voting on, not necessarily all having to be done in front of the city, but out of convenience to do it all at once, so that we all cover it at once, we'll do it there. And be advised, the city will be doing the same thing, so.
So that'll be second reading and action.
And public hearing.
Public hearing and action, okay.
And what time was that gonna be?
Five-thirty, I think.
My information, so those subject to change is five-thirty.
Okay.
I believe the notice has been published for that time, however, you know, timing may get.
That was September seventh, so.
Yeah, it's a.
First Tuesday and September.
It is, yeah, it would have been first Monday, but we'll all be celebrating the day of labor on that Monday, so.
All right.
That's all I have.
Very good.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you, Luke.
Thanks, Luke. Let's move on then to item number seven, monthly reports with the sheriff. He is not here yet, so we'll come back.
I'm sure he's not gonna make it today, so.
Oh.
I can, I can show his, his graph, I have that handy then.
Or do we want to have him come so he can explain some things, or?
Well, he's, he's gonna have to wait till next month, but just, I can just show real quick the, the graph. And then he did, did attend the mental health conferences, past qualities. He was hoping to share about that, but he'll have to do that next time, so.
Right.
And I guess the things, just the stuff that I understand, you know, you can see the, let's see here, more. So July had, looks like more, more calls than seven or twenty, twenty-eight calls, and then a lot more transport miles. And the average daily population, the jail was about the same, a little bit lower, touch lower, so dumb from seventy-seven point six-three to seventy-six point eight-four. And then you can see the fees collected there. I've sent this, I emailed this to Cindy that we can, so we can just include it in the minutes, but that's kind of the, the real basics of it. I guess you don't have it, I'm shorting it on Zoom, but I guess I just realized you guys don't have it.
It doesn't happen in our packet.
Okay. Right.
So, for information, and I'm sure we'll touch on that next month.
Yep.
When he's able to join us.
Does anyone have any questions for Lee? I've asked some hard ones.
You can answer it. Thanks, Luke.
Okay, item number eight, Sarah is not here, so we will bypass that one. Item number nine, note that the board will not meet next Tuesday, August thirty-first, due to the previous adopted policy that we do not meet the fifth Tuesdays of any months. So next week, we will not be meeting. Cindy, I'm gonna let you probably explain more, item number ten, the county surplus sale, if you have any other information?
Nope, Steve does.
Okay.
Steve's, Steve has set up a surplus auction sale, I believe, with the city, and it's scheduled for September twenty-fifth at the Extension Center complex. I believe he's assembling items to be sold, and departments are submitting items to be declared surplus. I'm hanging on to those to kind of do them, do them all at once.
Okay, and that isn't.
We're gonna have the sale the same day as the city.
We usually do it together.
The city also gonna move their stuff to the.
In conjunction with the city, we will, it's a joint sale, as far as, as far as I know, you'd have to ask Steve. I believe that's the way it's set up, that.
Cause I've had some people ask me, right?
Yes, yes, I believe we are holding the sale together, and then they'll keep track of the city items that are sold, and keep track of the county items, and yeah, I don't know who's conducting the, the auction, but.
I'll talk to Steve about that.
Okay.
Very good. I see that our welfare director is here, so we will go back to item number eight, action to approve an updated welfare guideline, but we'll let you do a little explaining first and share with us here.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you, this morning. I do have the new updated, from the last conversation we had, there was some question about the money that the county provides regarding commitments for drug and alcohol specifically. And in this policy, it says that we would only, only pay HSC. And so I had a conversation with Carrie Johnston, HSA regarding that, and she confirmed that that is the right policy to have, that when the county previously has helped with other ones, that's not, I think there's probably been some confusion on maybe even the practitioners end, or the. If there's been, what Carrie explained to me is if we do a commitment, an involuntary commitment to HSC, there's a six-hundred-dollar application fee, and that would be what the county's responsible. If they go to another facility like Worthmore or a different drug and alcohol facility, those are covered under their insurance, or they make other payment arrangements, and so there wouldn't be that six-hundred-dollar fee, and there'd be no responsibility in the county for that.
Sir, can you point us to the spot from the.
Yes.
This draft.
I want to say. I'm sorry, look at it.
So.
Section seven.
I, I wanna say page eleven, that's very old.
Yeah, page seventeen, sixteen, seventeen, maybe?
So. Sorry, what was that?
I'm sorry, not to interrupt, but you said that it's a six-hundred-dollar fee for an.
For the admission. That's the ad.
Oh, admission.
Admission, yeah.
That's just like the admission fee.
Sixteen, sixteen-seventy deals with HSC.
Cause that's.
The bottom of page sixteen, thank you, yeah.
Cindy, have we always had that?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we have always. But we have also paid to other facilities. I was just looking back five years in the check history, and I noticed we had paid Worthmore, we had paid Avira Behavior, I think.
Your health, yeah.
Yeah, and I guess I don't know what, what do we do if, and these were referrals from HSA.
Maybe that was after insurance, that maybe their insurance didn't cover it or something.
Not, not the way the letters come over.
So are those the ones that we've actually paid, or that?
Yes, we have paid them. So I, and I look back five years, and it's not a lot that we've paid them, but I can show you the check history.
I, yeah, cause I know.
It's been as recent as, I think, two thousand and eighteen, maybe, was the last time. And I guess my question was, what if they don't have insurance to cover their admin fee? Then what?
Yeah, from, so my conversation with Carrie was that that they, they have to work to pay that off.
So we do this at Portland?
Oh, so it would be.
Like a county poor.
Assistance, county assistance?
Yeah, or they work with the facility. Okay. They would make a, an arrangement with the facility to do that, and that wouldn't be that.
I hope she does speak to her council, because that is where it's coming from, to us.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll have another conversation.
Okay.
So is this something that we need to correct in this, or is this just a procedural thing?
That's.
Or in the procedures.
And then the six-hundred dollars, is that, are we referring to this, this housing loans?
No, so there's no, I don't, there's no amount, and there's not an amount associated with this policy. This policy just says that we would pay it, it doesn't have an amount, because we don't determine that amount.
So who's ever going qualifies for state program, but the state program does not pay the admittance fee, and that's where the county has stepped in for years to pay.
Okay.
So that's, that's the history on it anyway.
Okay, yeah, and the other piece is, so this is what Mini-Haha and Brookings County do, this is the same policy that they have, so they're not covering those other facilities, so.
So in the end, then, they should go through insurance. If they don't, they get sent in, it goes under our county assistance and took for payback.
It could, it could eventually, or, yeah, or they, or they work out with that facility that they're on.
So, and so it's the way it words it, says payment of such fees are voluntary on the part of Cottington County, it must be preauthorized by Cottington County Welfare. Is that, that's the spot we're referring to, right?
Yeah.
So if we, if we do voluntarily pay it, is that something that comes through for the board, or?
No, that would just be.
So right now, it's going through Cindy. It's gone the other side of the request, and so.
Okay.
And I'm willing to give it up.
Nope.
Yeah. Yeah.
Now, these are involuntary.
Yeah. Drug and alcohol.
Which is a different process than involuntary mental health.
Right, this is voluntary drug and alcohol.
So, yeah, so then, the rest basically stayed the same, the only thing that changed, well, so it all stayed the same. The only thing that changed is on the appendix, which is the final page, I moved everything that had an, an amount with it to that last page, so that if we review this annually, which would be my preference, that it's all on one page, as far as.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm looking, I'm reading through this.
Yes.
And seeing what some people might use for over translation. It says twenty gallons of gas and three quarts of oil. How did we come up with three quarts of oil?
That's a good question. I have no idea. It was what was in there. I am happy to change it. That was just what was in there, that's Ben, that's, and again, that's what the other companies have too.
If you hold five and you're down to two.
At that point.
At that point, you're probably.
Yeah, yeah.
I just was, I would, I was just curious how they come up with the number. I know it's a needed item.
I believe it's been many years since we've paid for a tank of gas for anybody.
Yeah.
That I can recall.
That's back when vehicles used to leak a lot more oil than what they do.
Right, and that's, and that probably is outdated, and maybe when.
Something, at least we have a starting point, and this will give you more time now to really, I mean, this is kind of a big piece of it, to zero in on this.
Do you need a motion to approve the updated guidelines?
Yep, we do.
So moved.
Motion by Johnson, second by Waterman. Was there any other questions or comments?
I just wanna thank Sarah for her work on this. I, I know you've spent some time going through this, and you're kind of jumping into the fire here. We appreciate y'all's work, so you're doing a good job.
This, this document, looking through this, and studying this, is very easy language. It's written very specifically, and if somebody comes to me, I could say, this is where you go, or.
You know, speaking of that, so can we put it on, on your, on your webpage?
Yes.
So get it.
Yeah, do you want, so should we put it on the county webpage, or the welfare, or?
We can do it.
Probably do both.
We can do a link from, well, we, we can figure that out, but yeah, we're getting a lot of stuff on the welcome page, we're getting kind of.
It's impossible to put a banner on there that will direct them to.
Well, you have things, it'll, the way it's set up is, and we could look at the overall design, but that's a bigger project, but it links to all the county departments to good welfare, and then, so.
Yeah, we, I can, I'll get in touch with Karen and.
We'll see. I, I think it might depend on how many calls Cindy gets for, with questions. I mean, you get a lot of calls, like, how do you, how do you do welfare stuff, and?
I don't.
Okay.
Yeah, we get, we get asked, we get questions on where is the welfare office, basically, is.
Yeah.
And we direct them, yeah, so.
And that's the way it should be.
Yeah.
And this will, this instrument really helps clarify a lot of things.
Yeah, this is.
Are we ready to vote?
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, motion carries. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah.
All right, let's move on then to item number eleven, which is discussion regarding engineers' elevations, and Rick has some information for us this morning. Good morning, Rick.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning, Rick.
I gave you all a handout of maps, you're gonna all get a map, they have not updated anything on it, you can't read it. So we'll start off with County Road ten, which is one hundred and seventieth street. Current water elevation is seventeen thirty-one point six. For water to flow out of this area, it has to get to seventeen forty-one.
Ten feet.
So roughly, the road is at seventeen thirty-five, so there's a difference of six feet, just to break even. There's one house on this section of road, there's a two-mile section here, and the house is on a hill, and that's seventeen, or seventeen sixty. So they don't have any water issues of any kind, it's just the road getting there. And this is the spot that we built up last year, and currently, it is four to five feet out of water. So it's kind of holding its own, it's went down just a little bit, but I just wanted to make you guys aware of what, where we're at. The, the partwork runs out, that will exit into Long Lake, which will add to other issues on the next one down, which is County Road eight-one, which is one hundred and seventieth street. The current water elevation is seventeen twenty point five. The road elevation is seventeen twenty-five, so there's about five feet difference there. The home on the west end, his basement window is seventeen nineteen, which is a foot below the current water level. There's no water there, I was, I made sure, drove out there yesterday, there's no water up to his window, cause the ditch is kind of filled in, so the water can't get there. But his main floor, I should have put it on here, I do believe, was seventeen twenty-eight. So there's a difference of three feet between the road elevation in his house, when he can't get into it anymore. His yard and everything would be full. So we'd have to keep the road roughly another three feet higher from his house going east to the next place. There's about nineteen hundred feet there that it'd have to be raised between three and five feet, so he could get in and out. And then the other nineteen hundred feet is from the second place to the county road, and they're, they're a little bit higher, but there's roughly another three to four feet that we have to keep that nineteen hundred feet built up on top of the three to five. So there's a lot of material there that to keep those homes out of water, before they can't inhabit them.
And we're in a drought.
Yeah, so much for your drought.
Not on the west.
Not, not over there, there's no drought.
But I mean, we haven't had significant rainfall.
I know.
Even on the west side, and we're still dealing with rising water issues over there.
I've had four inches of rain at my place here, Watertown.
Okay, in the last month, right, but.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
But I mean, you think that, you know, we wouldn't have that issue this.
There's a big issue there, a big issue.
It's not gonna go away.
No, it, it can't go away. It's gotta get.
Place for it to go.
Twenty-five feet deeper to flow out of it, this is basic.
Even if we, you know, raise this road up to, so they can get in and out, I mean, his house is still sitting lower, so it could still.
Yeah, we, we have to keep the road so he can get in and out.
Right, but I mean, he's, he still may flood, because if we get that much water, I mean, it's gonna go into his home regardless of what our road does.
And that, that's, this is just what we're keeping, so he can get in and out.
Right.
You know, because there's gonna become a point, if the water keeps coming up, that he will not be able to live in his home.
Right.
So, a question. And you brought up a good point for it, if water comes up in his home that's uninhabitable, at that point in time, would we require to maintain it, the road to get to his house, even though it's uninhabitable? I do not believe we'd have to, because how?
At some point, we have to tap out, say mother nature wins, right?
But then we have that farm, then, on the other side, that, that may not affect them, if I'm thinking of the right one.
Yeah, that one's a little higher, but when the water keeps coming up, when they, when I went to the engineering, they kept raising the water level, natureward, with the water fill in their farm area and stuff, it would affect his feed area and all that, so.
But not their home per se.
No, their home is higher.
Yeah, so I mean, we would have to maintain up to that one for sure, then, if the other one would drop off, we'd still have that one.
Yep, and I'm still in talks with the DNR to, they don't want us to drain anything, so, but, and we discussed that, you know, what happened, what, what made me think about it was the one at Day County on twenty-five to the west, that farm place over there that's been underwater for years. Yep. Yep, okay, the third one is County Road twenty-three four, which is four hundred and forty-second Avenue. The current road elevation is seventeen twenty-one, like I said, the water elevation is seventeen twenty, or seventeen point twenty-five, or point five, excuse me. And I'm planning on raising that, because that's perfectly four feet lower than all the rest of the roads. So we can keep that, that's a blacktop road that runs from the county line up to State Highway twenty, that a lot of people use that section of road, and there's approximately eighteen hundred feet there that we'll have to do something with. Currently, that, like you said, it's about a foot out of the water right now, not a third of a mile, yeah. So in that, had water on the shoulders, it did go down between six inches and a foot, and that's, that's about it, this.
Now probably back up.
You know, cause there's, it's hard to explain, but it's all water over there. It's one lake tied to another lake, tied to another lake, and it's just a massive.
Well, now the closed basins are full too, because it was running into those before, now they're all full, so it's just level.
Yeah, it's, whenever it goes up, everything's gonna go up. That's when it goes to medicine lake better. Yeah, that's all, they're all the same elevation, medicine, long, stain, horseshoe, billions, those are all at that seventeen twenty.
They get full, they back up.
And at some point in time, it winds up down there.
Down. Yep, but that's another twenty to twenty-five feet before, but if it starts, you know, even ten feet, I took Lee out there, this was earlier this spring, and you know, if you added ten feet, that's gonna make the landscape look a lot different. So other than these three homes, there's going to be homes going to the south along our County Road twenty-three, that it's going to impact huge, or.
If it gets that high, yeah.
Yeah, so I just, just wanna keep you, and as soon as I get the, the new maps, I will get those to you, so, that's.
If you want a really good view of what it looks like, get in, get in an airplane and take an aerial ride over to the county.
I'll take a ride when you wanna give me one.
You don't want me to fly you around.
Maybe gets, maybe.
If you ever have a chance to fly, I mean, you really get a good idea of how, how much water is just sitting around.
Maybe Jamie could use the drone.
Yeah, I'd really like to fly over, just to. Yeah, I, I'd really like to fly over, just to get a good look at it, but I know there's a few hills over in there that you can get up on and just see miles of water, you know.
Yeah, it's like all the pastures.
But I just, just wanted to make you aware, the only one that I'm looking at doing anything to is that's County Road twenty-three four. There, we still got riprap that we're working on today, and uh, when I get some more material, we'll start working on that, that's all.
One thing that, uh, I, I hope that people are aware, you know, people are just clamoring to get, build out the country. I, I certainly hope that, do you work with Luke at all?
A little bit, yeah.
And just make certain that people don't get themselves into trouble, you know, build a, build a house, buy a parcel land to build their, you know, their.
Dream home.
Dream home, exactly right, they end up, can't get to it.
Yeah.
You know, so we gotta really keep tabs of these things, and, and just so people don't get into trouble, because I don't, we're, I'm seeing people that have built places where they shouldn't build, you know, they just shouldn't build. I mean, you just, you look at them, you go, where's your common sense? Why did you build there, you know? And uh, I mean, if they inherited the, the house from great-great-grandpa, that's one thing, but if they, it's a new structure, well, that's all I got to say about that. You understand what?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
You know, just to, just to build on your point a little bit, and to drive it home a little farther, I mean, my driveway is a half mile long. I maintain that. When I put gravel on my driveway, I put, it takes eight semi loads. When I need it bladed, I pay the blade man to come and do it. So there's, and the equipment that it takes to keep it up and to get out when the snow blows, because you can't call the township.
But you have the luxury of sitting out there in this area, watching the coyotes steal their chickens.
Do you?
You know, that's worth something, right?
You want to mention to the rest of the board about the meeting on Monday?
Yep.
Okay.
Monday, August thirtieth, at six P M., we're going to have a informational meeting. This has to do with the house bill twelve fifty-nine about townships.
Sponsor.
Helping out with culverts and small structures. Great Barbara from LTAS is going to put it on.
Where's it gonna be? Where's it gonna be?
At the Ag Building.
Extension, uh, in the kitchen.
Yep.
Six P M. Next.
And I called all the clerks for the townships, and some of them I haven't, haven't responded, but uh, we'll call them again tomorrow, and see how many people are gonna attend, and so we can get a head count.
Yeah, I got mine, and I have five so far, but I'll wait to hear back from the other ones.
Yeah.
Oh, uh, how's the price of culverts coming in compared to the prices bid?
Haven't had to buy any yet, but I'm gonna be looking at some here shortly, so.
Just curious, thank you.
I had one constituent ask, um, the area north of Tinkerton Town. Do you have a proposed time of when the map's gonna go down?
It, that was what we bid earlier, it, it's gotta be done by the fifteenth October.
Okay.
So that's up to the description of the contractor to do it, so.
Okay.
Yep, I've asked it.
Don't know yet.
Don't know yet.
Has to be before the fifteenth, very good.
Yep.
I'll reply back. All right, I don't think we have anything, oh yes, we do, item number twelve, action to approve purchase of an iPad for the highway department.
Okay, this also runs in conjunction with the uh, uh, culverts and stuff.
Inventory.
Do an inventory, and then I'll, we'll also use it for uh, our sign inventory. I'm also working with uh, uh, First District to get an app to put on there. I thought I had it made the other day when I got ahold of the uh, company that installed the signs, but uh, they sent me Grant County stuff, so we're still working on, because we've never received anything on where the signs are, what the signs are, like on the end of Charlie Road, nobody could remember if it was a yield sign or a stop sign, so.
No, I remember, yes, I remember working with the other Rick, trying to get ahold of that, and it was just hitting a blank wall, I don't know where it went, but.
So, is this a, is this an iPad, or is that a generic word?
Well, I just put iPad. It's either gonna be a notepad or an iPad, because we gotta take pictures, and uh,
That's true.
I don't know if you guys have seen the questionnaire for the culverts, there's like seventy-five questions that have to be answered, so, and pictures, and we can do it all on that, so.
They touched on that at the Sioux Valley, so.
Yeah.
But um, so, so what's the price of this iPad, Rick?
It, I'm looking at roughly fifteen hundred dollars, so.
Okay.
But it'll be multi-purpose.
Just an off-the-shelf iPad, and we're gonna add this, install the, the app for it.
So this is what Rick is talking about. Here's the handbook, and then there's all these spreadsheets that they have to fill out for each and every small structure, so.
So just so, yeah, people know what the purpose is, so we have to basically, thanks to House Bill twelve fifty-four.
Twelve fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine, so from last session, you know, now it's establishing a system to assist townships with small structures like culverts, um, because it's very expensive for a township, and so, so the first step is to get an inventory of all these little things, and it's, it's, it's a pretty detailed process, and this iPad, as well as the, the program or the app that's gonna go on it, will greatly assist that effort, make it a lot easier. So that's basically a lot less labor-intensive, which is in the end of cost savings.
A very mu, a benefit to us, that they all get recorded, because that's what the dollars are based on, of what's gonna come back to us is the number of structures that you have in your county, so it's very important that we get this done.
Rick, do you have room in your budget for the purchase of that, or?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase.
All right, motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that motion carries. Very good, thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Okay, item number thirteen, discussion possible, action to pass a resolution to enact a ban on open burning, and I had a conversation earlier with Jamie, we're good. We're getting timely rains here, so, let's go, uh, don't believe. Maybe it was on, you know, I'm not finding it. Anyway, there's no need for burn ban this week. Um, item number fourteen, action to approve claims for payment.
Uh, we have several of those. It's our end-of-the-month credit card claims and our nine-one-one surcharge payment to the city of Watertown, so let's take that one first.
I'll be excusing myself from that vote.
Okay, yep, this is a payment to the Watertown City Finance Office for June nine-one-one surcharge collections, and it is in the amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventeen cents. We've received this money from the state of South Dakota, we remit it directly to the city of Watertown.
Make a motion to approve that.
Second by.
I heard Waterman first.
Okay, that's kind of what I was thinking. Uh, any other questions or comments? And Commissioner Van Duzen is recusing from this vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. All right.
And then we have three Visa bank card payments to make. The first one is for the emergency management and search and rescue department. Um, Visa Relia Bank, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents for miscellaneous expenses and travel. Second one is for the detention center, one thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars and seventeen cents, and that would be for miscellaneous purchases, supplies, and travel for correctional officers. And the final one is a disputed charge, but we are required to pay it, um, when we, actually, there's two more. Um, it's a Visa Relia Bank, and when we were um, renewing the county's um, domain name registration, we tried using this credit card first, and it would not go through. So we decided to try a different one. We, we discovered that this credit card was maxed out, we have a limit that can go on it, and it was maxed out, so we used a different credit card, and it went through, and then this one went through. So right now, it's a disputed charge for seven hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-eight cents, but we do have to pay it, and then we're gonna continue to dispute it with the company and the bank, so, um, that's what that one is, because we've already paid this bill once.
Right.
And that is for our domain name for twenty years. And then the last one is also Visa Relia Bank for the Register of Deeds Office, and it is a registration for the Priya organization for the Register of Deeds.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that motion carries. About fifteen, automatic budget supplements.
Nothing today.
Personnel changes.
Nothing today.
We have a few travel requests.
Yes, um, actually, we have three. One is after the fact. Um, our emergency management director realized he should have had one in last Tuesday, and in order to comply with our specific policy that you have to have pre-approved travel um, to be reimbursed, he submitted this one. He went to here for um, state E M one oh three training yesterday, and he'll be back today, so he did want to make a note of this, that he did, he did go and ask for your approval after the fact. The second one is for the administrative support at the extension, the deputy office coordinator, Kim Johnson, to attend uh, the state fair for, to help set up, and then Rick Hartley requested, our highway superintendent requested authorization to attend a local road conference.
So moved.
Motion by Waterman, second by Gable. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that motion carries. Public notices, we have one listed, the S D A C C annual conference, September thirteenth and fourteenth in Rapid City. Anyone else have anything?
I will add the road meeting.
Yeah, Monday, next Monday.
The thirty-first, right?
Yes.
Oh, no, I won't, because I won't have an agenda. Because you don't meet, so, just, we'll note it right now, that there could be a forum of you in attendance at that meeting Monday.
Right, yeah, we'll have two weeks to go by here now, so if you don't meet next week.
Yeah.
Until the seventh.
We already mentioned the meeting on the seventh for the ordinance, right?
Yes, well, that will be back.
That will be agendaized.
I'm just talking about the ones in between. There'll be a Republican meeting September first.
I will be in here on the second for uh, South Carolina Retirement Board meeting.
Right.
And I'll let you know how we're doing when I get back.
Right, this is Quorum events, that you're probably the only one going to that, correct? Um, there is a Boys and Girls Club, where they do in their camel races the twenty-eighth, maybe there would be a Quorum of commissioners at that. I will also note the Treasurers Office closure, and that will be this Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, tomorrow, the twenty-fifth, they are closed for training.
At noon.
At noon, they're in, yep, they're in the, in the morning, and then in the afternoon, they will be closed for training.
And that was pre-approved by the board a few weeks ago.
Yep. All right, I don't see anything else, I guess, but I could see that there'd be a forum of us, of us, old business. Anyone have any? New business? Anything for the open? All right, and we do have a need for executive session under personnel?
Yeah, personnel, very quick, just to.
All right, and there will be nothing afterwards that, any um, decisions, so, look for a motion then, to go in under number one.
Don't make that motion.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are in executive session.